Call for order, the January, I'm saying, June 25th, Committee of the Whole Meeting of Simpsonville City Council. City Clerk Clark, would you call and roll please?
Yes. Councilmember O'Rear?
Here.
Councilmember Ruth?
Here.
Councilmember Williams?
Here.
Councilmember Rocha?
Here.
Councilmember Pinkerton?
Here.
Councilmember Hutchings?
Here.
Mayor Sheemaker?
Here. Please rise as you are able to join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Each member of council has received a copy of the minutes from our May 28th meeting. Are there any corrections? Hearing none, the minutes will stand approved as written. No one signed up for citizen comments this evening, so we'll move on to item six, our staff reports. We'll begin with the financial report from our finance director, Christine Farina. Director Farina.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. A few highlights from the May 2024 financial report. General revenues are at 90% of the budget with a year-to-date total of $21.3 million. The May expenses are at 85% of the budget and year-to-date total is $20 million. The Superfund revenues are at 121% of the budget with a year-to-date total of $2.6 million. May expenses are at 86% of the budget with a year-to-date total of $1 million. Hospitality and combination fund revenues are at 130% of the budget with a year-to-date total of $4.8 million. May expenses are at 95% of the budget with a year-to-date total of $2.9 million. And the Public Works Enterprise Fund revenues are at 108% of the budget with a year-to-date total of $1.6 million. And the May expenses are at 78% of the budget with a year-to-date total of $959,000.
Any questions for Director Farina? Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 6B, our city administrator report from Diana Graceley, city administrator. Administrator Graceley?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I just want to hit a couple of highlights from my report. The municipal complex and the city park project is still on schedule. We are planning our move in October. We ordered the interior furnishings for the building and they should be installed right at the completion of the project. As I've reminded you, once the move is complete with police and fire particularly, those two buildings will be torn down and the rest of the park will be finished. So we're anticipating a total completion date of March of '25 for that, but we should be in our buildings in October. You all received, I think, an email from me advising that we did secure the easement from InterCraft for the swamp ride trail extension. So now I'm working with planning staff to secure the additional easements. We have a cooperative agreement with the school district, but we will need to go before the school board to get the easement for that property. But hopefully all of that can be completed by the end of summer and design will be underway. We are having a recap meeting on July the 8th with Blake Sanders, who is our design professional, and with Movers Will Be God and city staff to formulate our plan for this point forward. The downtown revitalization project is almost completely designed and ready to go to DHEC for permitting. And once we get a winter permit from DHEC, that project will go out for competitive bids. Just a couple other things. We did, Director Farina and I met with audit staff. They have had their committee for the audit and it's not even the end of the fiscal year yet. So we're hoping to have the audit complete earlier this year than we typically would. And then I have completed, I've not gotten a notification of an award yet, but some tax credit funding for construction of the swamp ride trail that would come through the State Department revenue by way of tax credits given to different utilities. And in this case, it would be ATT that would be providing the funding to us. I'll update you on that once we have a notification of funding award. But, you know, we're piecing together all of the grants and funds that we can find because we know that we're well over budget on the downtown revitalization project due to cost escalations, which also means that it's less money that we can put toward the trail construction. So we're looking for other funding sources to pay for that construction. Any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Council? Councilmember Pinkerton?
Yes, ma'am. You met with Turner and Vaughn. What was the outcome of that?
Well, not what I had hoped. Last year, we got $1 million from the state budget through earmark and this year it will be another million. So not what we need and not what I asked for. But I have been told by both that the Chairman of Ways and Means has promised to, if there's a surplus in next year's state budget, to take care of our downtown needs. So we can't hang our hats on that necessarily, but there will be a time when we'll have to have a discussion about what to do. Once bids come in and we know exactly the deficit that we're facing, I would like to schedule a time to talk to council about options. And maybe that we need to do nothing at the moment, but just prepare ourselves for the fact that we may need to do another bond issue to make up the deficit if the state's not able to come through with money. But we'll cross that bridge when we get to it. Right now, I don't exactly know what that final number's going to look like until we get bids back.
Well, you answered my next question, so thank you. Figured that's the way it was going to go.
Administrator Graceley, can you share with us what the earmark was for Malden?
The earmark for Malden was $6 million. Hence my frustration. $6 million for a soccer stadium that's not designed yet versus a shovel-ready project here in Simpsonville. So I'm a tad disappointed that we didn't get priority this year for funding and maybe Malden next, but I'm hoping that they will follow through on their promise to help us next year.
If any member of council is acquainted with Bruce Bannister, Representative Bannister from Greenville, he is the Chair of the Ways and Means Committee. And if we can have any influence, that's the place you need to influence the most, is Chair of Ways and Means. So say, if you have any connection with him, please apply that connection for next year. Any further questions for Administrator Graceley? Each of our departments has a representative here, either the department head or their designated. Does council have any questions from the reports that have been prepared by our department heads? All right, thank you for coming. If you would like to bail out now, you won't hurt our feelings, but we appreciate you being here. Next up is business. These are items that are anticipated to come before council at our next business meeting. What we're deciding tonight is whether to put it on our business meeting agenda. Item 7A, filing fees for Simpsonville municipal elections. Councilmember O'Rear, would you summarize, please? This is your item.
Thank you. Yeah, this is something obviously I ran into when I filed a run back in July. Filing fee for council is $300. Mayor, I think yours is a little higher, correct?
$480.
Or $480. I'm not a rich person, I'm not poor either. $300 bucks is a lot of money to want to participate in a civic function and serve your hometown, things like that. So, yeah, I thought about starting to look into it a little bit, got a little help with some information. And really, it's a point of really fairness. You know, this country, when we first started form, and I, you know, I'm a history person like councilmember Ruth is here. When we first started form, we were trying to figure out who got to vote. And eventually, it took a long time to get to where everyone got to vote. They had, you know, poll taxes in place that were found illegal, which made people pay to actually vote. Then they, they would have poll parties where the candidate with the best, really made it really the best of it was won. They put a stop to that. So when you hear, interesting, last presidential election, you had a lot of people holler about not being able to hand out water to people standing in line, that's why. Didn't want any kind of inducement for voting candidates or whatnot. But I think really it's a matter of fairness and a matter of people. You never want people to not be able to participate in something like we're a part of up here. I do strictly the finances. And then, you know, get some information, verify some information. Except for Greenville itself, Simpsonville's fees for the council members, excluding the mayor, are almost twice that of Trap Road Rest. They're three times that of Fountain Inn and Malden, and they're more than four times that of Greer. So I think it's an undue burden for our citizens in Simpsonville to participate in this process. And I think on the flip side of that coin, you might say, well, you know, I understand the cost of running an election too, because I've done that. And you can get funding elsewhere. So I just don't want anyone to ever feel like I can't participate in our country due to what looks like an excessive amount of money. I think this is a fair way to do it. You still hold the percentage, the word percent versus a whole number, because, you know, the way our ordinance reads is we, it is attached to what is reimbursed for this position. And if there's ever an increase in reimbursement for our positions, then this will increase along with it. I just think it is a matter of fairness to everyone that would like to be involved. I think it would be well in line. I think it would drop the fee for a councilman to $120, which is still more than everyone with the exception of Greenville. So I just think this is fair. I would like to see my fellow councilmembers vote to move this on to the next business meeting and see if we can get this ordinance back in line and fair to all the citizens of Simpsonville. Thank you.
Okay, motion is in order?
Second.
We need a motion to have a second.
I'd like to make a motion on my ordinance to change the filing fees for Simpsonville municipal elections to move to the next business meeting. Second.
I have a motion from councilmember O'Rear with a second from councilmember Ruth. Discussion? Councilmember Hachings?
I just want to say, I think this was passed just before I came on council on my first term. And I think the reason at the time was we had a number of candidates, over time, that had filed to run, got their name on the ballot, even got down to the point of the election and then pulled out of the race. Their names were still on the ballots and they, actually, some of those votes caused runoff to happen. It wouldn't have happened otherwise. I think the thinking was at the time that some of those candidates weren't serious to begin with. They were basically disrupting the process. And so by raising the fee, it put a little more skin in the game, made people that were thinking that way really get a little more serious about it if they wanted to get it right. So I think that was the reasoning behind the original move to move that filing fee up.
Councilmember O'Rear?
Yeah, I certainly understand that, absolutely. And I understand what runoffs were about too. But I don't think that's a strong enough argument to use money as a dissuader of people's participation. That seems kind of punitive almost when you say, hey, you know, we've had too many people file, so let's jack it up for only people that have money to file. Because that's to be a large part of the problem of our legal system today. I've talked to attorneys in the past and asked them questions. I asked one one time what percentage of people that come speak to you in your office about moving potential litigation forward actually hire you. She said about 20%, because the other eight, you can't afford it. So they don't even get access to our legal system. So to keep a number artificially high to dissuade people who may or may not be serious, maybe they start out serious and then realize how much things cost and they're like, I'm out. But I understand, I truly understand what you're saying. I just don't think it's enough to overcome. You can't just dissuade people by, if that's the case, just make up a number. You know, you give $1,000 on there, you're dissuading me because I couldn't pay that. So, but I appreciate the input you did. Thanks.
Council? Councilmember Pinkerton?
Yeah, thank you. So I appreciate Councilman O'Rear's comments on this and his history lesson on it. After you include Greenville in on that, you're pretty much average. Frankly, I'm kind of indifferent on this one. I always thought it was kind of a fair amount, $300. If you're serious about running for council, it's not really that big an amount. If you look at $300 in buying power, now you don't really get anything except the opportunity to run, but $300 is going to be worth about $285 in two years and something less than that in four. So to me, it's just not that big a deal, $300. I'm happy to look forward to move forward, but I'm not sure the juice is worth the squeeze, to be honest with you.
Council? Councilmember Rocha?
I do remember when the filing fee was raised and the reasoning behind it was because of people that weren't serious, just quote-unquote throwing their ring in the hat. There are a number of people file, create a great deal of minutia and then drop out. One in fact announced that they weren't going to run on Facebook, but never bothered to actually reach out to the county and have their name taken off the ballot. And people still voted for them as if they were still running. And it did split the vote and it did cause some problems. So the reasoning behind it, I think, was good. I mean, anybody can, you know, give up 100 bucks, you know, and not really be serious. Just bringing it up a little bit might weed out some of the people that aren't really serious and don't really want to put that money up. I believe that was the reasoning. So I kind of think the same way as Mr. Hutchings. I don't think $300 is that much, we're half of what Greenville is. So I, as Mr. Pinkerton said, the juice isn't worth the squeeze. It just seems like a non-issue for me.
Councilmember O'Rear?
Yeah, I can appreciate everything everyone's saying, you know, of importance of what this may be. We are half of Greenville, but we're at least twice what everybody else is. And I haven't really heard any tremendous issues out of Malden, Greer, Fountain Inn about a lot of candidates getting on the ballot unseriously or not dropping themselves off the ballot. To me, it's just a, you know, and $300 is $300. You know, $300 to some people are nothing. To some people, it's a lot of money and it is a commitment. And like Councilmember Pinkerton said, that's dropping every day with inflation of how much buying power you have with it anyways. I don't look at this as what's serious or not serious. I mean, obviously, there's going to be things more serious than this issue and other issues. But this is kind of like the argument with the planning commission vote. It really is, we seem to be alone by ourselves. I mean, you can't compare Simpsonville to Greenville. Greenville's just a tremendously large place. You can compare us to the rest of them fairly, I think. And we are close to double, if not over four times, the amount. So I just don't get how we explain that to the citizens of Simpsonville in a manner that makes it not sound like we're trying to purposefully keep people from running for office.
Councilmember Rocha?
So on that, if this were a citizen-driven item, if citizens were actually complaining, saying that they feel disenfranchised by the system because we charge $300 instead of $150, I could understand it being an issue. But I have yet to hear any citizen complain that they weren't able to run because our filing fee is too high. So again, I'm back to, it's just, it's not a real issue for the citizens. So I'm not sure why we would change it.
I've seen a lot of things come up here that were huge issues to the citizens that got turned down too. So like I said, I appreciate everything and I know y'all might consider this a little bit more of a minor thing, but to me, it's more of a principle thing. You raise it enough, I mean, what wins it stopped to whoever you want to eliminate at that point? You know, like I said, it's still attached to a percentage. The percentage is attached to, well, we're reimbursed. And if it goes up, if the reimbursement goes up, then the amount of money goes up. Because this, really, what's the cost to the city of Simpsonville for someone to file? Much or nothing? I mean, you know, putting somebody into a computer, things like that. So I just, you know, like I said, it's a principle thing to me. I understand and rank, if you had to rank issues of importance, this hit at the top of the list. And, you know, people, human nature dictates that, you know, people aren't going to really come up to you and go, hey, this is a little too high. I want to run. You know, that's just not an issue. Like you said, it's not going to be an issue that you're going to hear a lot of feedback on, I would imagine. Thanks again for y'all's input.
Council? So I'm going to agree with council on the left-hand side of the dais from a standpoint of, I think it is important to make sure that people who are running for office have a solid commitment and they're serious about that commitment. The other piece of this too is that the cost to the city of running elections, I mean, the cost, it is not free to run an election. And for example, last year, we had four seats up for election and we had no lack of candidates for those seats. And two out, I mean, 50% of the seats that were up for election had more than two candidates for those seats. And of course, one of those went to a runoff. And a runoff is not free. So apparently, this amount of money that we currently have in our ordinance is not a barrier to entry for running for council or mayors who've had three candidates for mayor, for example. This proposal would put us back to almost the level that it was before the ordinance was enacted, which was in 2017. And it takes, before this ordinance was enacted, the amount for mayor was $150 and the amount for council was $100. And currently, it's $480 and $300. And this proposal would take it to $192 and $120. So it's almost a complete rollback. And I remember when we had four and five and six candidates for council offices and it was, it was a lot of runoffs. And like I say, runoffs are not free. So I think that it's important to keep that in mind. So I think I'll join the left side of the dais in this case. Council? Councilmember Williams?
I did look up some cities that had around a similar population size as we have in, just generally in the state and like Anderson, Sparkford. And their filing fees aren't that far off from ours, easily like $360. Anderson's $200, some of them are $1, and they just kind of go kind of throughout that range. So I don't really see this one being much of an issue. And if you're going to file to run and understand running a campaign, you're going to have to find donations or people to help you with that. And some of that can go back to the money that you pay into the filing fee. So I'm okay with it staying where it is.
Council? Hearing no further discussion. On the motion to amend the filing fees for Simpsonville municipal elections and move this item to the next agenda of our next business meeting, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed signify by saying no.
No.
City Clerk Clark, would you call for a roll call, please?
Councilmember O'Rear?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruth?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
No.
Councilmember Rocha?
No.
Councilmember Pinkerton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hutchings?
No.
Mayor Sheemaker?
No. The motion fails with a vote of three to four. Item 7B, Stormwater Development Standards. This is my item. So what is proposed here is an ordinance to amend Article 10 of the Land Development Regulations to add a section that would change our current regulations, which call for being resilient to a 25-year flood level to a 100-year flood level. The reasons for doing this really stem from when we've had people come with the pain of having flooding on their property. One of the things that they often mention is that this thing was built. This runoff from this street now comes in my yard. It didn't used to. This is their tying development to the impact on their personal property. So this would increase our standards to address some of those concerns. There are downsides to doing this because while this would apply to new development, it does mean that those costs would be passed on to whoever the eventual tenant is on that property. Either the property owner themselves or if it's an apartment complex, for example, their rent would be higher. If it's a home to be purchased, you know, the cost of being more resilient would increase the cost of that home or for a business, et cetera. The flip side of that is, is that even though those costs are increased, they do get something in exchange for that increased cost. They get a place to live or do business that is more resilient from flooding. And for our existing citizens, this doesn't increase their cost at all, but does improve their protection from new development coming into the city. I'm torn about personal property rights in terms of, is this the right thing to do as we are doing something that would increase the cost of developing a piece of property? But at the same time, we have a lot of people in town who are suffering from flooding and I think we need to take those concerns into account. And on balance, I believe it leans this direction. So with that explanation, I move to adopt the new Stormwater Development Standards and move this item to the next business meeting.
Second.
So a motion from the mayor with a second from councilmember Rocha. Discussion? Councilmember Pinkerton?
Thank you. Of course, I received this in the mail the other day, this packet from review. So naturally, I had to look into it. Spent a couple of days reading everything, including the City Land Development Manual and the County Storm, that design manual. That's a lot of reading. I didn't read every word of it, but I took a lot out of it. What we're doing here is essentially taking a new standard and handing it to the county to insert it in the, what's it, 2.2, chapter two of the manual. Says, okay, county, you take care of our issue. And what I gather out of that, to somewhat mayor's point, is a new developer, this comes along with a bunch of land and property owner and they want to develop, they're going to have to develop their property to withstand a 500-year flood event and contain that water. Now, if you go to the standards, it can be done in a variety of different design factors. We'll get to that. But what, lost my thought, sorry. Anyway, it sends it to the county to take care of it. And once they get it, they have, they have to take that information and make sure that they're building by it. So that's a good thing. I have a few questions though. I have a few questions, though. Does this 10.5 negate any or part of the rest of Article 10? Because if you look at Article 10, there are a lot of computations, and there's a lot of words that tell you what to do, a lot of information, but then all of a sudden, you get down to 10.5 and says, oh, by the way, we're going to the county. So did anybody look at 10 to see if we're actually negating what parts of 10 actually say, or for that matter, the rest of our land development? Because this all of a sudden just pops up, and I'm just asking the question if, if anybody looked at Article 10 to see if it needs revision, total revision? Guess not.
So once, can, can we, can you ask our, this ordinance was developed with the help of our city attorney who is here, can, can you help us with this?
Mr. Pinkerton's question, I, I can go back through Article 10 to be sure that there are no conflicting provisions, but the, the intent of this ordinance is that we're simply adopting 100-year standards and giving that to county, as you say, and they will apply that standard for us. So we would not change or alter, or intend to change or alter any current LDRs that may conflict with this, and I, I don't, couldn't foresee any conflict arising from that, but I can certainly double check.
Well, again, you'd have to compare the two, and that's a lot of work. Okay, I get that part, but, I mean, even, even in page 10, 3, it's on the, on the road design, it says, use a 10-year average return frequency for one-hour storm. Of course, right before it, it says, prior to adoption of a stormwater management, manual, design manual, the following shall apply, use that 10-year average. So you can go through the rest of the pages, and they will, it does address building standards, which the county standards would, might be the same thing, I don't know, but it would definitely, I think, needs to be looked at. Fact of the matter is, and although it's not quite germane to this particular subject, our land development says we can't use extruded curb. So, and that's, we just bought a curb machine. So another question, when does this take place? Does the county, if we pass this, I'm assuming it will, I'm kind of for it, actually, but if we pass this, what happens then? Does the county get it and then just automatically put it in, or do they have to review our standard and, and adopt it into the system? Because Malden's in there as well, right now, although that seems to be the only other city, there's some other areas.
So we are co-permentee for, for the stormwater permitting through DHEC. The county is the permentee, and Simpsonville, Malden, Fountain Inn, and Travel's Rest are all co-permentees. Other than Malden, everybody's adopted the 25-year standard. This ordinance is modeled after Malden's ordinance, which requires the 100-year standard. And so, yes, upon adoption of the ordinance, we would send the information over, I'm sure you all remember, Judy Worketter coming to explain this, how, way the county manages stormwater and land service permits on behalf of all of the co-permentees. It was quite a lengthy presentation. So we would send that information to her, and her staff would then, as they're reviewing plans, would, would apply the 100-year standard rather than 25.
Okay, but it's got to get into their standard at some point. I mean, we're, we're putting it in our standard, but if we're telling a developer, you got to use this standard, it needs to be in there. So I'm, I'm looking to see that it gets adopted immediately. My, can, kind of has something to do with my next question, is development that we have on the table now, let's just use, for example, the West Georgia Road development. If they haven't submitted their plan, this gets passed through, would they have to change their development plans to agree to 500-year flood?
So it would depend on whether or not they have received their land service permit from the county.
So it's possible if they haven't applied.
If they've not applied to the county, then it's possible, of course.
Then it could change their whole design.
This would not be enacted until August, because it would require two readings, so, you know, I'm not sure if they would try to.
They may not know.
They may not know. Yeah, they may, if they found out, I suspect they would move a little quicker, because it would be less expensive to use the 25-year standards.
That particular one, I know they've got a retention pond that dumps out into the church property, which I don't agree with. Actually, in the standards, it says you're supposed to, all that water that comes through your retention pond actually has to go into a culvert, a creek, or some kind of device that actually transport water, not into somebody's property. Anyway, so 100-year storm, there's a 1% chance of it happening in a, in a year, and I think, how much bigger is that? It happens to be 9.33 inches in a 24-hour period. Now, you can use frequencies, which can be a lot different, whether it's an hour, two hours, makes a world of difference. But it's a lot of water, and it, it is going to be important if development is in, or in the city, or will be in the city, that, that affects other properties. Of course, even when it gets to the county, there are ways to get around it. There are a number of variances within the county's ordinances that allow you to challenge those 500-year flood claims, or it could be based on fees, it could be based on, one of the variances I've read it correctly says that, well, if you're not really affecting anybody else's property, you may not have to apply to these standards, you might be able to do some of the best manager practices to get away from it. So in all, it sounds real good, I, I'm, I'm for it. Where I'm just not over the moon on this is that we're just putting in an ordinance that frankly, I don't think is going to affect anybody in the city of Simpsonville at this point, based on the flood problems we have today. Say that, but, and I'll just, I'll use Point Setia for an example, no further development will ever affect the stormwater problems we have in Point Setia, never going to happen. It's all because of the stormwater system we have, doesn't work. So again, I'm not opposed to it, but I just, I want to make my own statement that just, just because we make a, a statement about 500-year storm does not solve all our problems. Thank you, and I apologize for missing out my, finally rehearsed speech, but I got lost.
Councilmember Root?
Is there, do we have any idea of the cost that would be involved going from a 25 to 100-year for the developers?
It would depend on the size of the development, the number of acres with property, the topography of the site, there are a lot of factors that would play in, so it's hard to give an answer to that. We know that it would be more. The pipes would likely have to be upsized from what would typically be designed for a 25-year storm event. The retention pond would likely need to be larger to retain the water on the site, which is more costly, and it then ultimately results in less of the property that can be developed. So there are those factors to consider, certainly.
So someone that comes to the city, if we pass this, that moves into a smaller subdivision, they could basically get the same house in one subdivision versus another, one at 90 homes, it's going to be a lot more, and if they were moving into a subdivision with 400 homes, is that based on the, the plot that the developer is developing on, based on the amount of units per that development?
I don't think it ties back to the number of units as much as the size of the property. But in economies of scale, I think you could argue that, you know, the cost for, if you're spreading it out over 400 homes versus 90, there may be a noticeable bottom line difference, because you're going to, you have a cost that's going to be higher for the 400-home development, but it's also spread out over 400 people versus 90. But, you know, so typical economies of scale, I can see where there might be a slight difference there. But I don't do stormwater permitting, so I can't say exactly what that translates into. What I can say is that Malden has applied this standard for many years, and it's not slowed their development, it's not turned anybody away from wanting to develop property. So that tells me that it's not a significant enough cost to deter a developer, make him want to go somewhere else to build a subdivision.
All right, I do like it, I, I have tossed around impact fees around that time. This might not be defined as an impact fee, but I think it, general, generalization kind of is. I think that I'm for this, I, I agree, it's not going to help our current problem, but if we don't do something like this, it's going to continue to cause the problems we're seeing now, and they'll look at us and say, why didn't you do anything when you could? So I think it can only help moving forward, but yeah, if we think, or the city thinks that this is going to solve our current problem, we need to be on record by saying that we don't believe that it will. But it will help future developments, the future current developments not get runoff from things that are coming. So that's just what I was wondering, if we have any kind of cost analysis to that, but there's not.
Well, I can certainly ask that question of the county stormwater staff, and just see if they can give me an idea of what the percentage increase is between the 25-year standard and 100-year standard. They might be able to provide a little more definitive answer on that.
Councilmember Rocha?
I agree with the comments that have been made, this will not, you know, obviously address Point Setia's issues or Westwood's issues with stormwater, but it is a step in the right direction, and I appreciate the initiative. That said, you know, had, had someone taken this initiative before places like Point Setia and Westwood been built, then it would have been a different outcome. So I think it's a forward-thinking regulation, and I, I'm for it, I would like to see this done. And I'd also like to see us tackle some other things for, for the older neighborhoods this year. That's all.
Councilmember Pinkerton?
Yeah, just real quick, I think Councilmember Root was asking maybe about an individual piece of property having an effect, but you really have to go look at the county standards, because it is based on acreage, and I don't think a home that has three-quarters of an acre property is going to make a hell of a difference to the county, but it just doesn't work that way. It all has to do with the bigger properties, for the most part. When you get into something over five or six acres to 50 to 100 acres, and then you're dealing with something quite a big different animal. I would hate to think that the few properties in Point Setia or even Westwood, if they're available, would have to build a stormwater management pond in their backyard, it wouldn't be feasible. But if you really want to have a great afternoon, just open up the standards, cruise through it, you'll learn everything you want to know. Maybe take two days.
Councilmember O'Rear?
First, Mayor, I appreciate your fair balance on your presentation, acknowledging the good of this. I haven't disagreed with anything yet, but also the, the fact that it will, it will cost down the line money for probably the consumer. But I guess one issue I have with it is all consumer impacted, on the buying end, would be the new development. So you could say maybe it gives a leg up to the older development as it comes to selling a home, and of course, Councilmember Rocha can speak to that better than I can. But here's what I think, I, like I said, I haven't disagreed with anything yet, I like the idea, but I think this could be, and Councilmember Root mentioned the words that I know have been brought up here before, impact fees. I think this could be more, this could be part of a more comprehensive impact fee package. And I think, unless I'm wrong here, and people will have to be corrected, with the problems in the existing neighborhoods, like where I grew up in Point Setia, you know, I think with comprehensive impact fees, there could be monies that could help remedy the problems in the older neighborhoods versus just a stormwater standard on newer developments that will only help the newer developments. I did reach out and speak to the city manager, Clinton, last week, and, you know, I didn't record the conversation by any stretch, but I just wanted to kind of pick his brain, because they did institute impact fees after, I think he said about three months study, and he just says it's the greatest thing they've ever done. And I just think this could be more comprehensive, I think this could be part of a package of, of what impact fees are, and what I would like to see is that, you know, not only this, but instead of piecemealing something like this, solving an issue strictly for new development with this versus leaving the entire old developed Simpsonville out, I think a comprehensive impact fee package could address a lot more than not, and that way, we won't be having the conversation with the taxpayers about, sorry, we can't help you in your 80, you know, 60-year-old neighborhood, but we can help the new guy over here with his stormwater. So that's why, I mean, I like this, I got no beef with it, and I just think we could have a more comprehensive package, because if, if we're going to already cost the developers money by instituting this improvement, which I think it obviously is an improvement, then I think we can just go ahead and knock this all out in one fell swoop with impact fees, and I think that's something we really need to look at before we try to piecemeal things, is try to put together something that's going to be much more comprehensive. Thank you.
Counsel? Councilmember Radix?
A couple of questions, especially, you said Malden has this in question now, how, how long have they had?
I don't know exactly how long, I know certainly, you know, all the time I've been here, so at least six years they've had it. I'm not sure I can find out, you know, clarifying maybe the cost question for Councilmember Root, I can find out from, unless you know.
I think it's at least 20.
20 years. Now, Malden does have more significant flooding than we do. They've had issues for a long time, not just more recent with the frequency and intensity of storms that we're seeing these days, they've had issues for many, many years, so 20 years.
And do they also have impact fees?
No. So this fee would be paid to the county, who's actually issuing the land service permit. It would not be a fee collected by the city of Simpsonville, that these monies are paid to the county. And as far as a single home being built, there is, this would only apply to land service over one acre, so anything under one acre, if somebody owns a parcel and they want to build a home on it, it would not apply to them. They would have to have a land service permit to build on an acre or less.
Well, I think everyone agreed, most of our flooding in Simpsonville are kind of baked into cake, the current conditions we have in some of the older neighborhoods particularly. This, in my opinion, will have little to no effect on that, but I think it will, it would show our desire to move in a direction to try to improve the situation, this being one part of it, and I like what Councilwoman O'Rear said about looking at some other, other things too. I don't see a problem with going ahead and implementing this and then working on our, our current situation with the, with the older developments, I wish we were doing some of that already. So just, just, thank you. Clear, though, I think to everyone that this will not have a great impact on our current conditions, but it would, it would show that we are moving in a direction to try to resolve some of these issues.
Councilmember O'Rear?
Jeez, if this be, if, and like I said, I got no problem with this, it's just, would this be an impediment to a discussion, hopefully pretty quickly down the road, about impact fees, as it could come into like double billing here? Because I think Minister Graceley pointed out, this is going to the county anyways, which is, but like I said, it, it doesn't help anyone that's already got development in Simpsonville. My house I grew up in, I think was built 1970-ish, '71. Those people, if they got flooding, they're going to keep it, but I think with impact fees, maybe we can, we can address other people's issues, and I'm the Councilmember Hutchings, that, you know, we, we, we need to show that we're, we're trying to address this, you know, beyond option traffic and infrastructure here, the biggest, biggest topic we hear, like stormwater. And this, I think, would be part of it, I think Simpsonville could do their part to, you know, if we're going to do this, which I'm glad to, and the county gets the reimbursement, I think the city needs to come in behind and, and look at what impact fees can do, not just the new development, but for everybody that's here. Because a lot of these people, like where Councilmember Pinkerton lives, I know people in that neighborhood that lived there for 50 years, and it's not really fair of them to say, you know, it's great that these new guys aren't going to have stormwater issues, or nothing we can do for you, I think impact fees, we can do that for them. So I would like to look at that in the future, we'll be happy to pass this law. So, okay, thanks.
Counsel? So let me just say that I 100% agree with- So let me just say that I 100% agree with everything that's been said about this does not at all address any of our existing problems in neighborhoods like Point Setia and Westwood. And it's not an intention at all that, you know, that we're just done after this. There's a lot of different things that we need to look at and work on. And thank you Administrator Graceley for pointing out the primary reason why this even came up, which was a conversation that I was having with her about, wait, Malden has a 100-year standard and we have 20. Why don't we have a 100-year standard? And that's where this comes from. This comes from just trying to get us on a better footing for future development, but in no way at all ignoring our existing problems. I think we've got to be thoughtful about that as well. Further discussion from council? Okay. On the motion to amend the stormwater development standards and move this item to the next business meeting, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed signify by saying no. Motion carries seven to zero. Item seven C, fiber franchise ordinance. City Administrator Graceley, will you summarize, please?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor and Council. A couple of months ago, I was speaking to Andy Narman, who is the city administrator for the city of Greer. And he mentioned that they had recently adopted an ordinance and a franchise fee agreement to go along with the ordinance to mandate these agreements with fiber optic companies that are extending service in their city limits. I know you all are familiar with complaints you've gotten from people from the company, various companies who are digging to install fiber optic cable throughout the city. Different companies are in different neighborhoods, and that's okay. What we need to do is establish a standard so that there aren't multiple companies installing the same service in the same neighborhood where these people are having to be inconvenienced over and over again. And so I had asked our city attorney to look at the Greer ordinance and also the franchise agreement that they have in place in order to have council consider doing the same thing here. So that's what you have in front of you. You have the ordinance, and then the agreement would be an exhibit to that ordinance that would then be required for all fiber optic companies or any kind of telecommunications company to enter into with the city if they want to exit service within Simpsonville's city limits.
Thank you. Motion is in order. Councilmember Root?
Mayor, Council, I move that, this is weird how to say it, um, council approved on first reading the fiber franchise ordinance from the city.
Now, this, I'm going to just get it rephrased since this only moves this to the business meeting, so, which would then be first reading.
Correct. Mayor, Council, I've moved that we pass to the business meeting the fiber franchise ordinance.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Root, and the second from Councilmember Roche. Discussion. Councilmember Roche.
I was living in one of the neighborhoods that's getting dug up quite a bit, having a lot of activity in the front yard. Questions have been coming up. How many of these fiber-laying companies are going to come through and lay cables and fiber optics and stuff in the ground? And on the other hand, we don't want to get stuck because right now we have really poor service with the only cable company that is available to us. So while we welcome new opportunities for a better, faster, affordable service, I don't know how I'm going to ask this question. Are we, by entering into an ordinance where the city authorizes a franchise to sell their services this way, is the city going to usurp customer choice by limiting the number of choices that we have?
So what this ordinance would do, or the subsequent agreement that goes with it, would simply be to have the franchise or have the fiber optic company have some level of responsibility for the work they're doing in these neighborhoods. Where now, you know, they are allowed to dig in the public right of way. This just governs how they do that and what they have to adhere to as far as putting the property back in its previous state. It gives us a little more authority over what's happening there. If, say for instance, you know, right now we have four companies that are in different areas of the city. I don't think that we will have an instance where a fiber company will want to go where another one exists. It would be rare because then they would have to work around making sure they don't cut that fiber cable when they're digging because it is very fragile. And there's only so much space because you also have water. You know, sewers typically in the street, but you have both water and you have sometimes underground electrical utilities, gas in some cases. So there's only so much right of way that we have available for, for people to install. So I think it's a protection for the public and for the homeowners to not have the risk. You all probably remember the gentleman that was here about three months ago. He had several digging in his, well, I think he just had one fiber optic company, but they cut the cable and he was without that service. And then they came back out and I think they cut it again. And, you know, he was very frustrated because the amount of digging that was happening on his property. So I think, I don't want to speak for every citizen in Simpsonville, but I think the preference would be to limit how much digging is happening in these neighborhoods for everybody's safety and for their continuation of other services, you know, where you might run the risk of cutting those. It doesn't mean that we have to necessarily say, no, there's already a provider in that area. We have the ability to look at it on a case-by-case basis. So see what you're saying, you definitely want customer choice, but then we also are very limited, especially in these neighborhoods, because the right of way is not as wide as it is on, you know, DOT highways. And so there's just not as much room there without, and especially in neighborhoods where the lots are very small, you have even less room. So it just gives us the ability to regulate it where right now we really haven't been able to at all. And I know you all have gotten complaints from residents. We've gotten them here. Public Works gets them all the time. And so I think it's important that we try to take control over this rather than let it get out too much further ahead of us because it really has. You know, we never had this issue until about a year ago. And I think it was a lot of the ARPA funding went to extend fiber service. And I think it was really meant to go into the, to the less populated areas that weren't served at all. And now what's happening instead is we almost are being overserved here with different providers. And so we really, I believe, need to get a handle on it to try to control some of the issues that we have as a result.
A lot of the phone calls that I have received and emails have been people assuming that the city is sending these companies out and digging on their property and so on. Something goes wrong, they want to know when the city's come to repair the driveway that was cracked in the process, or the water line, or who's going to reimburse me. And I've had to explain that this is not a city initiative. You'll have to get that from the private company that did the damage. So that said, if we're doing a franchise authorization agreement, then I assume there would be some sort, they would have to sign on to some sort of part of this ordinance that would hold them liable for damage, that would tell them the day, the times that they can dig, and they can't be out there after a certain time, disturbances, you know, to personal driveways, where they can park their vehicles when they're working. Because some of these come with a whole entourage of, and they're leaving large bundles of line, I guess, that the fiber optic cable goes through. They're, they're leaving these pools in our cul-de-sacs. They're having gravel dumped and nobody knows where the gravel came from. It's just in the street in front of their home. So I assume that this ordinance would address all of that and maybe put some sort of fines in place?
It's, it's a 19-page agreement that really focuses on the fiber optic companies to meet various standards that currently there's no requirement that they meet. You know, we can say, you don't really have a job, I know you need to get out there and fix it, but there's no, there are no teeth behind that. Where if we're in this agreement and they're really negligent in what they're doing, then we don't have to give them any more encryption permits because they've proven that they're not a good partner.
So if we pass this at the next business meeting, will it be grandfathered into work that's already in the process or that has been done or?
It would, it would affect any future digging that occurs. So we can't go back and say, you know, you have to sign, because the agreement basically is so that they can get an encryption permit. And so, but if they're still working in the city, and most of them are, I think, wow, maybe the only one that's sort of pulled back. They were really aggressive at first, but now they're gone. So we can't go back and make them sign one. But we can, the ones that are still working and want to continue to work will be covered under this agreement.
Councilmember Root? One, and I haven't read that agreement. Is there anything on that that would, has any verbiage of them notifying the homeowner where they're doing the work? So that, because I get calls to and I get messages to all the time, that stipulate, you know, that homeowner not having to call, you know, city staff or find who their council member is, that before they leave, they have to leave something on the door handle that says, hey, we did this work. If you have problems with what we did, please, you know, notify us. And then if it's not fixed to their life, then they could contact city staff.
I don't recall a section that officially requires that they do that. However, I will tell you, I'm shocked that they don't. I mean, they're missing their target audience, you know? It seems like the first thing they would want to do before they start doing anything is say, hey, we're coming to your neighborhood. Here are our rates. This is when the service will be available. And go ahead and try to get customers signed on because they can install it, but if nobody subscribes to the service, then why do they bother to install it? So I'm hoping some of the more recent ones that have come on, Ripple Fiber is brand new to this market, and I know Google Fiber is now reaching out about coming into the city as well, that perhaps we could, you know, encourage them to be a little more proactive as far as notifying. Do you see something in there?
Yeah. If you go, section five of the agreement, it would be the agreement where it provides the city protection of the driveway. And it does specifically provide that the fiber company has to provide, take all precautions and necessary protection for the public. And so make a half-foot sign, warning signs, signals and other to get a notice to them that they're doing the work. So there are built-in protections to the public to be aware that they're going to do the digging.
Okay. I, I still would like to see verbiage in the actual contract that stipulates they have to do this. You have to leave some type of literature at the home, and if it's in between two homes, they need to leave it on both. So if there is a problem, then they're taking some accountability. And then by the time they find out who their council member is, I call you, you call department heads, and we've made, you know, a half-day phone calls finding out which company it was, then they can go directly to the business itself and not, I'm not trying to get out things, but it might take a half-day to a day to allow them to know which business actually did that work instead of them trying to figure out who to call first. I would like to see, because I get a lot of calls, it sounds like other of us up here does as well. And I, I thought all along this would be an easy way to fix that remedy. When I heard that you had a 19-page agreement, that might be something that we can maybe squeeze in, just, just an idea.
Councilmember Roche?
Um, I guess I'm trying to get the big picture of this thing. And can we, if we can have like a dialogue back and forth, that'd be great. First is if he, whoever lays the fiber optic cable gets the business, is that how it works? I mean, they own the cable, they get all, excuse me, get all the business, is that, I mean, that's, I think that's why we're talking about multiple cables. You know, we'll call it company A lays the fiber optic. They have exclusive rights to eternity for that fiber optic line. Is that correct?
If they, they, they would if, unless they, or if these fiber companies get sold, the agreement would be assigned to the new owner. But, so the terms of eternity, I'm not sure about that. But if they lay the cable, fiber optic cable, then they would get the business from the homeowner. If they sign on to the, that's certain.
Yeah, I guess, and that, that kind of gets back to where Councilmember Roche was saying. That would in itself, it's who gets their first wins. Because if they own the cable, it's like right now, I mean, years ago, I looked out in my backyard and there was a trench in my backyard. And I'd see all these flags, I have to, I literally had to do some research. Finally got someone, finally asked them what they were doing. And what they were doing was, it was, I won't name businesses, but they were extending their service to my neighbors through my yard. Never heard a word from anybody, and it destroyed property. So my neighbors get that cable and internet, which is fine, but I didn't get asked. But I guess, you know, I'm familiar with the unregulated industries. You know, gas is unregulated in certain states, so companies compete for customers using the same infrastructure. So they're using the same gas lines. So if you get SCANA or, or whatever energy companies, you, you do the price per therm and everyone uses it. I guess what I'm getting to is it seems like we only have finite space for fiber optics. And if one, two companies lay them, those are the two companies we're stuck with. They don't have to give customer service. It's a take it or leave it option at that point. And that would be a concern for me because, I mean, you can't force someone to share, I guess, fiber optic lines. But I do know this in, in the pharmaceutical world, patents expire and they're challenged constantly. And when they expire, you have a lot of people that can get access to that product. So I didn't know if that was something that could, that's why I asked the from here to eternity question. Is that something that could, we could give leeway for a set number of years? It could even be 20 years before that fiber optic line becomes more of a possibly share line for the other companies? I don't know. But it just seems like this is, any agreement we make in the finite amount of space we have is going to, it can't do anything but stifle competition because whoever signs the first, whatever, we'll call three agreements, if those are the, if we can fit three lines in, then that's it. We're done. And that's the companies we're here with. And if all three of them don't work out, then no one's served or it will. So any of my, did it make sense what I'm saying about?
Well, I think so. They have to sign on to this agreement to come into our right of way. So in, in my view, if ABC fiber company, we enter into this franchise agreement with them, they go and lay lines in the neighborhood, I don't know, I don't know why another company would want to come in. And I think that's going to take care of itself. But we can't, once we allow them a franchise agreement, we're not going to be able to control who does the business with who. We just allow them to market their service to the customers within the neighborhood.
And I, but I guess what, right, we said, it goes back to what Councilmember Roche was talking about. Like you said, if, if ABC gets there first, why is anyone else going to bother? And then that's, that's who that homeowner or that, that area has, and that's it. It's kind of like, it's kind of like what's going on with, you know, cable now. We've got one company that has cable business and that's it. So, and I think everyone knows what customer service is like there, and it's terrible. So that's, that's the only concern, you know, is whoever gets there first is going to win. Is there any discretion in this agreement that you can just say, we've looked into your company and we don't want to enter into an agreement with you, we'll skip all?
This is a proposed agreement. So no one, we don't have an agreement with Wild Fiber, but what we're saying, if council moves this forward and adopts it, they're saying, okay, if you want, if you want to lay kind of fiber optic in the city of Simpsonville, here's our franchise agreement. These are the terms with which you're going to enter into this agreement. And so that's what council is authorizing at this point. We don't have a contracted party as part of this agreement that's going before council.
And we're going to ultimately decide who gets that, that business. And, you know, I couldn't imagine every part of the city, or some parts of the city, we might have space for eight companies, but in some parts, we only have space for two, literally. literally. So just, I understand what you're saying, I just, I just wonder if there was a better way to help everybody, I guess. Thanks.
Councilmember Peggert.
Uh, is there a fee associated with this franchise?
Yes.
Okay.
They would be subject to the telecommunications tax that's collected at state level and then they would also pay a thousand dollars a year directly to the city for the agreement.
Okay. Um, Spectrum, we're all very familiar with, generally has everything overhead, generally. But if they go underground, they'd have to enter into an agreement.
We already have a franchise agreement with Spectrum.
Not the same one though?
No, it's not the same. It's similar to this, but it's not exactly the same. And what they do is they collect the fees from their customers and then remit back to the city directly.
Okay.
Quarterly.
I just happen to be one of those people who dug up in my yard and it was Spectrum, okay? And they ran a fiber optic line through our neighborhood into Powderhorn, but not to service the houses directly. They only put it in for storage because fiber has great amount of storage and with all the buildings going on, they're overrun. So to keep up with speed, they just put in, so it's already there. I don't think it's going to keep anybody else from coming to my yard because they've already come and marked out the gas and marked out the roads. So somebody's coming, I don't know who it is, but they'll be, I, I don't see, if a company wants your service, there're going to be multiple people in your yard. I don't, I don't see it's, it's going to be limited to one, to be honest. In fact, on a project I worked on in Maryland, fiber optic companies actually tear the sleeve. And I only know this because once you tear into a sleeve and break some of these fiber optic lines, you find out real quick who it is and you shut down half of Maryland. But they can do that if they so opted to. Because the sleeves are, you know, this big and they can hold multiple lines. I'm not saying they'll do that, but it's a possibility. But, um, I'm glad to see us get into this. If not for anything else, is to let everybody in the city know that we have some control over it because you're right, WOW jumped into Powderhorn versus, maybe Powderhorn too, but Point Setia, or half of, side of Point Setia, haven't seen them since. Uh, and they, and they did put signage all over, like I said, everybody had a, a sticker on the door, that's what it's for.
Councilmember Peggert.
Um, I want to mention something that you alluded to earlier about the purpose of the ARCA funding. Uh, at the MASC conference, they emphasized that as being a rural improvement. Um, and I think one thing we might be looking at here is these companies are getting that funding to lay the fiber optics and they're not really concerned at this point about whether they get customers on that line or not. I mean, that could be, that could be a reason why we've got multiple people coming in. The, um, question I have is, can we in any way limit the number of franchise fees that we're willing to allow this to be done with on a property or is there?
Uh, we can limit how many people we allow to encroach in a right of way. And so that's what we would do. Like say for instance, WOW already came through and the lines are there and they have customers signed on through the service. Um, but while they were digging, they cut various other lines. We know that it's tight in there and that they already had issues, so we're likely not going to allow anybody else to encroach in that right of way because we knew there were issues to begin with. And so that's where we can exercise some discretion as far as who is allowed to go in there.
I know I had a constituent calling the other day and she had two digs already in her, uh, right of way. Um, and she was trying to get in touch with one because it left some things. Um, but she didn't know which one it was and she called one and then pointed the finger at the other one and the last person. So she called me and asked me how, you know, how she could find out. And I said, I don't, I don't know exactly, you know, how you know, how you would find out that information just because I don't know that we, as a city necessarily know.
We, unless they're digging without a permit, we do have, we do, um, provide encryption permits as requested for various encryptions, whether it's fiber or another utility or whatever. So we would generally have records of who's digging where, but, you know, it's possible that some of them move in and dig and we don't know about it.
I directed her to the city and she didn't call me back, so I hope she got.
Well, somebody was probably was able to answer her question.
Councilmember Rocha.
So I have a concern with the limiting because what if the first company that comes through ends up being a terrible company? What if they raise prices, um, for their services, you know, that are too high? I would literally have to move, sell my home and move and go into a neighborhood where they have adequate service or a better price if I want that service. So what's the number? I mean, how many, what's the number are we saying?
It depends on whether their utilities are in the right of way and how much room there would be. Um, if another company isn't even interested because a lot of them wouldn't want to go. It's very expensive to do, you know, fiber optic cable itself is very expensive, the labor to install it. Um, so I think it may police itself. And my hope is, I think somebody alluded to something I wanted to address it earlier. Um, you know, what if the company goes out of business? They have a very valuable asset in the ground and they're going to sell it to another fiber optic company to get, to maximize, you know, if they go into bankruptcy or whatever, they're going to be required to sell that asset to liquidate as much as they can to pay off their debts. So, um, you know, even if you have one that's not very great, it's managed poorly and it goes out of business, that's still a very valuable asset that another company can come and, and purchase and have control over. But I understand that's not exactly what you're asking. What you're asking is, you know, why can't we have three or four and then that way it's healthy competition?
That's true.
And I can, yeah. And in some cases that may be okay. You know, we would have to look at those on a case by case basis. Like I said, my neighborhood where I live, there's not a whole lot of yard to begin with. And so there's probably very limited room in the right of way for digging. Nobody's come through my neighborhood yet to install fiber optic. But, you know, if they did, I suspect that there's not much room for more than one there just given, you know, the size of the area involved. So I think a lot of that will depend on which neighborhoods and how much right of way there is, you know? And it varies. You know, some roads are twenty feet off center, some are thirty, um, some are less than that. So it would really depend on how much space is in there and what other utilities are there.
Thank you.
Council?
So, um, I agree with some of the comments I've heard about, and I'm concerned about, we don't want to limit competition too much. I feel like competition is a good thing and it's something we have not had, that Spectrum has not had to face. And I have heard Spectrum is replacing, um, their cable with fiber in a lot of locations. So they may be succumbing to the pressure to be competitive in that way. Do we have any idea of what the, uh, the fees would be to the consumer on these, these fiber companies?
I don't. Um, I honestly have no idea because I've not, you know, been a customer or I don't know what they charge.
Who determines the, the fees that are, but those fees come back to the city, right? So who determines those fees? The franchise fees?
The state, the, the fee that's set in the agreement is set by state law. We don't have any discretion. That thousand dollar fee that comes to the city is set by state statute.
I'm, I'm talking about the individual.
You're asking about fees to the customers.
The individual customer. There are franchise fees that are charged to individual customers. You see it on your, your.
Well, the franchise fees are limited by state law. So they can't just arbitrarily say, you have to pay a fifteen percent franchise fee. They can't do that. Those are limited. Now the actual fee for the service would be determined by the company and I guess, you know, their business model.
Okay.
You know, currently we are, Spectrum has put in fiber into the municipal complex because they're the only provider that's able to provide that for us right now. So we're entering into a contract for fiber service, um, for the fire department, police department and city hall. And we're subject to, you know, what they, what they charge for that service because there's not another provider there right now. But in the future there may be because you're dealing with probably a wide right of way that would allow for more.
Any further discussion? On the motion to approve the fiber franchise order to move it to the agenda of the next business meeting, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed signify by saying no. Motion carries seven to zero. Item seven D, purchase and placement of a pump track for recreational purposes. This is being presented by councilmembers Rupen and Hutchings. Councilmember Rupen.
Sir, in light of the time, I will try to speed this up for all the people in the crowd that remain. Um, it was brought, um, about a year and a half ago when we, I, I believe we were opening up pictures for the new city park. Um, a young man called me, I think he was thirteen. I've tried to find this young man and I can't. If he's listening, I would ask that he called the city and connect with us because I, I want to give him some, some recognition on this. But he called and set up a meeting with myself and I invited the mayor. Um, and he brought his mom about an idea of putting in some type of track out of park. Um, bike track that could also be skateboard and inline skates and these type of things. And, and I thought it was a good idea because we don't have one. Other cities are adapting to this and adding them. We just didn't have the right place to put it. I think, um, we looked at Heritage Park, but there's flooding, um, and just not the real right place to put it. City Park didn't have room. We've already tapped back some of our basketball courts and other things that we wanted there. So we just kind of put it on the back burner. I kept a, a little contact with him shortly after that, lost touch, lost, lost face with him. Um, but about two weeks ago, a city administrator called me and said, hey, can you, can you come in and, and I got something I want to, um, throw past and also by councilmember Hutchins, because this would benefit his work. But to make a long story short, there's a local businessman in Greenville, uh, who owns this, a pump track, we'll show you pictures in a moment, um, that he's wanting to sell. He purchased it at a very high expense, I think it was a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. He hasn't used it a whole lot. They have to take it up, disassemble, reassemble. It's taken him more time than he would like. And he approached Greenville City, um, and they didn't want it. And luckily he reached out to the city administrator because we had been talking about something like this. So, um, we'll show you pictures. He's willing to sell this to the city, um, for half the cost. I think it's sixty-five thousand dollars would be the price. I wasn't crazy when I heard that, but we can use, uh, H and A tax and not, not come out with a general fund, which I really like. I think if we spend H and A tax money, um, I personally would put it in our park. So I was all for that. And we think we have a perfect place there in Alder Park, um, where it would sit. And, um, when you see this, you'll see why it's better than a dirt track. Dirt tracks kind of tear up, they get muddy, they don't get used as much. This is something that a bicyclist can use, a skateboarder can use, and inline skates can use. It looks safe, it's durable, it can't be picked up and moved and, and torn up. Um, so I'll leave it at that. I have a longer story. I'm going to cut it short. I'm going to turn it over. Councilmember Hutchins and the mayor can slip through the, the slide presentation here real quick and show you kind of what we're talking about.
Thank you. Before we get into that, I want to just briefly, uh, go over what a pump track is because when I first heard that term, I didn't know and I've learned a lot over time. Pump tracks are purpose-built tracks for cycling, has a circuit of rollers, banked turns and features designed to be ridden completely by riders pumping, generating momentum by up and down body movements instead of pedaling and pushing. It was originally designed for the mountain bike and BMX scene and now due to concrete and other asphalt constructions, also used for skateboarding and accessible to wheelchairs. Pump tracks are relatively simple to use and cheap to construct and cater to a wide variety of rider skill levels. So, um, and the general term we use is PJB, which means pump jack and burn. And I, and we did, I remember the discussion we had initially about this, uh, going into Heritage Park and I was excited about that, but, um, we have since found out that there's quite a bit of preparation that has to be done before we can do something there. So, um, when discretion brought this, this idea to, to my attention, I was very excited about it. Um, the, uh, let's go to the first slide. These are the two kinds of, of, uh, pump, pump jack, uh, pump, pump tracks. Uh, one on the left is, um, in traveler's rest, a traditional track. And that's similar to what we were talking about doing at the Heritage Park location. The one on the right is a prefab that's located right at the moment, Flying Rabbit in Greenville, which is a recreational site. I don't know if anybody's been there, but I went up and I was blown away with it. I didn't even know that was there. But it's ama, it's an amazing place. Something to think about for later on in the future, maybe for Sensible, something like that would be wonderful to have. But in addition to zip lining and a lot of other things, they have this, this, uh, pump track installed right now. Um, so the, uh, the idea here being that we can move this to Alder Park. Alder Park is, is a level field and this can be set up, uh, kind of plug and play kind of thing. Uh, then there's enough of this track that we can set up a main track and we can also have a smaller version set up for, for younger kids. So this would appeal to older kids and younger kids. My contention for a long time has been that we, Alder Park's been underutilized. We used to have ballgames there, uh, years ago and, uh, talked to some of our fellow council members, uh, their kids would play there and it used to be covered up with kids and a lot of, lot of, uh, recreation. But in years, uh, recent years, it hasn't been used that much. So this, this to me would draw kids back into the park, uh, would make it, uh, something kind of unique, uh, for Sensible. Um, and, uh, I'm, I'm just really excited about having this at Alder Park. Uh, as most of you know, Alder Park is a, uh, a flood, flood plain, flood zone and, uh, it's flooded pretty regularly, but this would be basically impervious to that. So that's one other reason why this would work, would work well at the park. The, uh, just a few facts on this, uh, we'll go to the next slide. Prefab pump track, uh, as I said earlier, offers plug, uh, plug and play. It's designed by professional ramp company. Uh, highest point is thirty inches from the ground, so it's, it's safe and it can be used by cyclists, skateboarders and rollerbladers. But I think basically we've covered all the other points on that, the fact that it's, uh, can be, can be converted to two tracks in our situation is a, is definitely a plus. As we mentioned, uh, earlier, the dirt track, uh, still could be an option for Heritage Park, but, uh, we've got a lot of work to do before we get to that point. Uh, this, uh, this track that we're proposing to buy is, uh, made by American Ramp Company. And as I said, it's installed at the moment at, uh, at Flying Rabbit on Orange Road. So if anyone wants to take a look at it prior to our next vote, uh, go up there and take a look at it and I think he'd be impressed with it. With that, um, I would like to make a motion that we, uh, mayor and council, that we approve the purchase and placement of pump track for recreational purposes and move that to the next business meeting.
Second. A motion from councilmember Hutchings with the second from councilmember Rupen. Discussion? Councilmember O'Rear.
Where was this when I was a kid? I mean, I used to just eat in the backyard where I fell into our creek when I did stuff like this. Uh, I guess really the only thing is we, we'd like to pay for a referee, to referee bicyclists and the skateboarders, which is not here, those folks don't get a lot of money. But now I think it's a big addition over there. Um, you know, I've, I've talked about in the past about hard track, I love, I love, it gets kids active. I was a very active kid, I need to be a more active adult. When I was a very active kid, I need to be a more active adult. But I think this is a great addition to utilized space we have over there and the design. I might actually go do it myself when it gets in place. So it's turned my longstanding tradition. I always vote everything out of committee, so we'll give it in for this.
Councilmember Hutchings?
Just want to add to this also, we, we discussed, alluding to your, your point, we, we discussed the addition of cameras at the park to basically oversee what's going on. That's a pump track and I would like to have one also, a camera on the playground area as well. I think that'll help cut down on a lot of problems that we've had in the past. And as we, as this moves along, I think the traffic itself will help, but the cameras I think certainly would be a good thing to do at this point. And then Esprit and I discussed some sort of restroom facility on the property. What that is exactly at this point, we haven't put it inside, but we feel like we need some sort of restroom area there for, for the customers to have. And we need to consider the ADA requirements, that's one thing that I don't think the previous restroom that we had there on the park was, was ADA compliant, so we need to look at that.
Mr. Pinkerton?
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. I actually went to Alder Park today just to see it because it's been a while, maybe 30 years since my son played tee ball down there. But my concern may have been answered, but Alder Park is in Zone X, flood zone. So in looking into this, if you do have a flood and water comes in, it's probably impervious to the water itself, but do you anticipate any problems with maintenance at all? And I, would this, this would be turned over to Parks and Rec, I guess, to take care of?
Yeah, I would. I'd just regret to answer that.
Yes, so we, we did consider that when we talked about placement at Alder Park, you know, knowing that it floods fairly frequently. It doesn't even take a hundred-year storm to make that happen. But Director West and Director Davis and I went and looked at this initially. We had Ty Howell with us who is Greenville County Recreation and then he had an intern too who came. So initially the idea was to put this on the wetlands property down at Howard Drive and then a swalded way that we can't really develop for any other purpose. And we had talked about a traditional PBJ with just dirt, you know, public works could go down there and do some grading and move dirt around. But once Ty Howell brought this to our attention and we went and looked at it, we were all blown away by it. It's just, it's such a neat thing. So we were talking about how we mitigate the fact that, you know, there's going to be standing water down there on occasion. And Director West mentioned that, you know, he would like to put some gravel down and then put the track on top of that. And it is, you know, relatively impervious to water. You know, it may require replacing certain parts here and there over the years that, that might be, you know, a little, have a little something in that allows water to permeate. But for the most part, if we put it on the gravel, we're not putting it directly on the ground. It's possible that, you know, half the track will sit in the water during the storm then, but it, it recedes fairly quickly. So we don't anticipate any problems with that. Councilmember Hutchings mentioned, you know, because we're activating this park now, it's becoming more than just a neighborhood park, we would have to address the restroom issue. And we had looked at getting a handicap accessible porta potty down there that we would build a roof structure over to shade it so it wouldn't get overly heated in the summertime. And we would have cameras installed to protect that. That seems to be the most efficient way to handle that issue because unlike the pump track, if we try to build a building, it would be subject to floodwaters and that would be more problematic with the building than it would be for the track. So we thought, you know, that's the easiest remedy there is to just have a plastic porta potty that can be moved and have it, I want to move in if need be. We currently have a porta potty, an ADA porta potty at College Park. When we added the pickleball there, we needed some type of restroom amenity because we had activated that park and no longer was just a neighborhood park. So those are the thoughts, you know, that we have come up with to address the flooding issue and also the need for a restroom.
Sounds good. I like that idea.
Councilmember Roche?
As far as the gravel goes, just a couple of points. Gravel will probably wash away when the area floods and also it'll get up on the track, which won't do well with wheels like inline skates and skateboards. So as an alternative, I wonder if we could get some of that rubber, the rubber surface that we use for, you know, it's like shredded tires and flip flops and stuff. It's like a reuse, what do they call it? The reduced reuse recycled movement brought that about. And it, I think the rubber might be a little more cushion because there's going to be a lot of falls.
So the idea is to have it just under the ramp portions itself so it wouldn't extend beyond the ramp. So, you know, if a child fell, they'll fall on the grass, there would be no gravel for them to fall on. But I would like to explore the option with the rubberized surface, you know, it's possible that that may be a better alternative. We'll certainly look into that.
And then as far as the restrooms go, Mr. Hutchings and I had discussed that and how to make those ADA compliant. I sent him some pictures of the ones, you might know where they are, right on Ocean Boulevard in Myrtle Beach. They're at like one of the first intersections where the largest parking lots are. They look like a tow behind trailer, almost like a horse trailer. And it has a wide ramp. It's not long, it's short, but it's a wide ramp that comes right up off the sidewalk. And you can actually roll a wheelchair into those and it's movable. So if at some point we needed it for another event, we could always move that. Anyway, that, that was one. And I sent him pictures of that and he might be able to share with you. Then one question, liability. I'm curious, like between maybe now and the next meeting, would you be able to get us some numbers from the insurance company that insures our other parks and let us know like how much of an increase it would be to have this added?
Yes.
I'm all for it, but I want to, I'd like to see those numbers and know what the total cost will be.
Yes, we'll, we'll get that. Just to let you know, there are multiple municipalities who have various forms of this. Clemson just recently built, they spent over $300,000 on an asphalt version of what we're doing. The thing I like about this is, you know, it's on a green space, it'll be cooler, we're putting it in the shaded area of Alder Park. And I'm not sure what the highest point on theirs is. Because it is a PBJ where you can do burns and jumps, I suspect, you know, it's higher than this. I haven't seen it yet. I just know from the city administrator that they did spend in excess of $300,000 to do that. And there are other ones around too that are, you know, built from concrete and asphalt. And I like this option because it appears to be very safe, you know, so there's not as much risk of injury. It's going to fit the environment that it's being placed in, I think. And I, I really think it'll be heavily used and I think we're addressing something that we've all heard from a long time and for a long time, and that is that the youth feel like there's not enough for them to do. And this would give them an option to, and I did make Ty Howell demonstrate it for me. He wouldn't let me record it, so I don't have a video to share with you, but it is truly, you're just moving up and down on the bicycle and it propels you around the track. And he did two loops and he was done. And so it wears you down pretty quickly. So I think there'll be, you know, a lot of exchange where kids are worn out and other kids can get on. And so that'll help with the safety issue too because they're not going to get on that thing and ride for more than five minutes at a time probably. It's just an exhausting thing to do.
One more thing, this was actually something I thought about for our new city park, police presence, I think would be great during the most used hours, like after school until, you know, dark. And I'm kind of, I've, I had the idea that maybe we get some bicycles, some trail bikes and have, you know, officers available in the park. This park, Alder Park, City Park, Heritage Park during recreation, during, you know, like the ballgames and stuff at Heritage Park and the new park, you know, for everything that's going to be there, just something to consider, maybe some, because police presence, just the officer presence will deter so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rupen?
I forgot to mention just a few things during my presentation, just initial questions that I had with the administrator Gracely. My first concern was liability, so Esprit Shea covered that, we'll, we'll get that back. The second was, well, what's going to prevent, as a dad of teenagers, I thought, as a dad of teenagers, what's going to prevent teenagers from moving these things around? So we didn't cover that. They're extremely heavy and they lock into place, so it won't be capable for them to do that. Once they're set, they're set. What I like about it is we can, we can move, we'll have access to move them by locking and moving them. I guess it would take quite a few adults to, to move these things. So I do like the fact that you can move it around and maybe change the turns if the kids get bored with them, I, I don't know. And the third, the third thing I thought of was this might be something good that the junior council can get involved with as well and, and maybe we can challenge them with something, with Justin, on how they might be able to, something to do with this. I don't know what that looks like, I'll leave that up to them, but those were the three things that I forgot to mention upfront.
Councilman O'Rear?
Just real quick, I think councilmember Roche, when you were talking about the, the material, I was thinking about that material that was under the swing sets at City Park because I've seen awfully dear old, and that's what I thought you may have been talking about.
Councilmember Hutchings?
I just want to mention that, you know, we had some concerns about the walking trail issue and we put that in, but it's held up very well and the city keeps it, keeps it maintained and it's been a very popular item at the park. And as, as you know, we put in a little library there and that's, that's gone well. The thing, other thing I want to, want to say is I am so pleased with the new signage that we put up for the, all the parks. I saw that one the other day and I took a picture of it and sent it out to our neighborhood group and I think everybody loved it. So those signs really look good and add a, another level to our, to our city. And I also want to thank you, Esprit, for your creativity and looking outside, you know, kind of outside the box a little bit for these kind of things. This, this is something that I really appreciate with you because you were always looking for ways to improve our city and, and without, you know, costing us money. And of course, it's funny, we're coming out of the HNA fund, but it would certainly not be affecting our, our general funds. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
I have just two comments, one in favor, two, when councilmember O'Rear rides, there will be video.
Absolutely. Because he can still win money on funny some videos. I'll split it.
All right. Is there any, any further discussion? On the motion to approve purchase and placement of a pump track for recreational purposes and purposes and moving this item to the next business meeting agenda, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed signify by saying no. Motion carries seven to zero. Item eight, executive session. We are now considering going into executive session for the purpose of receiving legal advice from our city attorney, Daniel Hughes, regarding pending litigation and also to conduct a performance evaluation of the city administrator as is required by city code. Do I have a motion?
Motion to move to executive session.
Motion? I have a, a motion from councilmember O'Rear with a second from councilmember Rupen. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of going into executive session, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed signify by saying no. Motion carries seven to zero. This is my official announcement for state purposes, state law purposes. The only action that can be taken in an executive session is to adjourn or to return to public session. And at this time, we are going into executive session for the purpose of receiving legal advice from the city attorney regarding pending litigation and to conduct a performance evaluation of the city administrator as required by city code during executive session.